Good evening and welcome to the regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. As they have been throughout the public health emergency, this meeting will be conducted virtually and will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. I'm pleased to say we expect to be changing that in the very near future. We'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online and on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the special meeting of the mayor and council on May thirteenth and the closed session of the same date. The meeting of the mayor and common council on May seventeenth as well and the closed session, I'm sorry, that's right, that's all. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve.
There's a motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
I'm second.
Second by Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Hoff, I believe you had a correction you wanted to suggest?
Yes, so one correction was under appointments to the common council standing committees. It used the terminology co-chairs where I think we tend to use vice chair and I think there is actually a technical distinction between that. So I think we should update the minutes to reflect vice chair instead of co-chair.
There is indeed a difference and we do use vice chair. So without objection, the, we'll change the minutes as suggested.
Thank you.
Any further corrections or suggestions for the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Before we move on with anything else, I just wanted to say that we are very pleased tonight to have with us, neglected to do this at our last meeting, and pleased to have with us tonight our interim city administrator, Mr. David Deutsch. Mr. Deutsch worked with us, you know, about four and a half years ago in a similar interim period. And we were very pleased to have him with us then. He did a great job for us and we're pleased to have him back with us again tonight. So, Mr. Deutsch, thank you for joining us tonight and again, we are very pleased to be working with you again.
To the point where we've tried to get him to come take the job full time twice now unsuccessfully.
That's right, that's right. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar this evening. Madam, a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it and the consent calendar is approved. Thank you very much. And now it is time for the report from the mayor. It is a great pleasure to turn to our new mayor and invite her to give her a report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, you know, just wanted to say thank you again to everyone and the supporters who came out and voted in the municipal election on May eleventh. I know that the council meeting prior before Mayor Joe Dominic urged people to come out to vote and we did. We had a really great turnout for that election. We can always do better and so don't forget that municipal elections, of course, are where the decisions that really impact your daily life are made day to day. So I also want to thank the staff for their warm welcome. I've been able to get into the new administrative building, meet some of the staff that have joined the city since I stepped off the council in 2019 and as well see some older familiar faces as well who I haven't seen very much in the last couple of years. So that's been, that's been really nice as well. And I have to say, I'm really looking forward to the next, to the next couple of years. One of the things that I did want to talk about and bring up, and I know that it has been discussed slightly in the past, but it's something that I think I'd like to move forward with. In the time of vaccinations, I know we're all vaccinated here on the council. I would like to see the city move forward with providing some initiatives for staff to become vaccinated. I know that when the pandemic first hit and the schedules changed, we couldn't afford to lose, for example, the entire public work staff out due to an outbreak within Public Works. We couldn't afford to lose, you know, most of the policing staff out. And I know at that point in time, some of the schedules had changed, et cetera. And so moving forward, I think that it would be great if we could find a way. And I'd like to request of the staff to see if we could locate some funding to provide incentives for vaccinations for the staff and see what we can do with that as we move forward over the next couple of weeks. And of course, retroactive as well. So if you've, if you're a member of the staff and you've been vaccinated, you would be eligible for this, for this monetary. I would think we might be able to do a monetary incentive for the staff to become vaccinated for the COVID vaccine. And along with that, you know, just a thanks to the staff for all the work that they've done over the last fifteen months as well. It's been, as a resident of the city, it's been really appreciated. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I will go now to reports from standing committees. I'll note that the committees really have not had a chance to meet in the week since, you know, the the council was organized, but we'll go, we'll go around the room and just make sure that nobody has anything to share. We'll start with the Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr.
He's on to the Arts Council.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure, I guess, an administrative, some administrative housekeeping. On May the thirteenth, the Carroll County Arts Council Executive Director announced that after heading up the the Arts Council for a number of years, Dr. Judy Morley has announced that she is going to leave, leave that post. She's going to stay on until September thirtieth. I am on the Executive Search Committee and under the leadership of Tom Sterner. That search committee is well underway and we're looking forward to continuing to build upon the successes of Dr. Morley and of Sandy Ox, who preceded her and did such a great job for the Carroll Arts Council. So I'll be sure to keep the mayor and council informed on the progress of that. And then there's a couple of shows coming up. The Arts Council is moving full steam ahead with opening up and providing arts and cultural events for the city of Westminster from June fourteenth through July twenty-fourth. We will have a show entitled Mobiles and Stables. It's a unique kinetic sculpture show featuring a couple of artists. One, of course, is Tom Sterner and we're really looking forward to that, to that show. The public is invited for a free reception on Thursday, June the seventeenth from five to seven. And I think it's exciting that we're once again starting to get together for events such as that. The show will, again, the show will take place from June the fourteenth through July the twenty-fourth. The other exhibit that I want to call to everyone's attention is an exciting exhibit that I always enjoy every year. It's called Adapt and Inspire. From June twenty-eighth to July thirty-first, we'll have an art exhibit featuring the arts of the Carroll County public school art teachers. And that's always a great show. That exhibit, again, is from June the twenty-eighth through July the thirty-first and there will be a reception on Thursday, July the first from five to seven. I think that'll wrap that up, Mr. President, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. The Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Hoff.
I have nothing to report so far.
All right, thank you very much. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I will report that, of course, the budget was completed just prior to the turnover in the elected body and so we're glad to have that done for, for the coming year. I would note that we are following very closely the progress of the plans to distribute funds to local governments under the President's American Rescue Plan. The city is expecting to receive perhaps as much as fifteen million dollars. The, we know that there is, you know, some additional guidance that's forthcoming from, from the Treasury. We don't know exactly how much the money will be and we're learning still more about what conditions are attached to that. But we are following all that closely and look forward to working with our financial advisor on the best way to deploy those funds for the benefit of the city. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Right now, the Personnel Committee will be meeting in the next couple of weeks. We will be updating our handbook and discussing some employee policies and I will inform the council in the future of how that works out.
Very good, thank you. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Kavachi.
No report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi, and the Public Works Committee, Mr. Kavachi, again.
No report, Mr. President.
Very good. Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. Dayhoff.
Recreation and Parks. I'll look forward to a report by Director Gruber later. However, maybe I'll steal a little bit of her thunder and share with everyone that we're looking forward to the Beer and Barbecue Stroll and that will take place on Saturday, June the nineteenth. And the Recreation and Parks Department is looking for some volunteers to come lend us a hand with that. And I think for right now, I think that'll wrap up my Recreation and Parks report. I'll look forward to a much more complete report from Director Gruber. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, and I have, yes, Mr. Kavachi.
So I want to apologize. Can I backtrack for a second?
Yes, you may.
I kind of forgot that I'm now the Chair of Public Works. It's been twelve years, I've never had to give a Public Works report. It's always been Public Safety or Parks and Recs.
We'll try to remind you ahead of time.
So I do want to back up for one second because there is one thing I do want to report under Public Works. We received, I believe, at least two separate written communications and I believe a phone communication as well, voicemail from citizens praising the work that our public work staff did repairing a water main break that was pretty significant a few, I guess, a week or two ago. And I just wanted to point that out. When someone takes the time to send a written correspondence in or leave a voicemail written in particular, that, that means there are probably dozens of other people that felt the same way. And I just wanted to point that out that, you know, we're greatly appreciative of what the staff did out there. We know it's a lot of work and sometimes it happens in the middle of the night and bad weather. So we're grateful for it. There was also, just within a couple of days ago, a pretty significant sewage issue that popped up and the staff got out there and fixed that as well. So they've been very busy, as they always are, but I did want to point out that, you know, we received those correspondence, all of us are aware of it. And I know I speak for the entire legislative body that we're very grateful to Mr. Glass and his staff for all the great work that they do.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kavachi. I have nothing tonight from the Technology Committee. Moving on to council comments and discussion, we'll start here at the end of the table with Mr. Kavachi. Anything else you'd like to add?
Just one quick, brief thing, following up on the mayor's comments. I'd just also like to say thank you for being, to the citizens for re-electing me. It's a nice vote of confidence. When you serve multiple terms, you worry that you maybe haven't done a good enough job to come back. And I guess somehow they thought I did and I just wanted to say thank you to the citizens and my colleagues here because I got a lot of support from, from most of you or all of you and I appreciate that. And I'm really excited to be working with Councilman Huff in his first term. And the mayor, of course, we served together for four years. So I've already had my, my time with her, but I'm really excited to have her back, especially she's the first woman mayor of, of the, of the city. It's just awesome and I think we're going to have a good couple of years in front of us. So thank you, Mr. President, for that time.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I also want to say how much I'm looking forward to Councilmember Dan Huff and, and Mayor Mona, Dr. Mona Becker. I think it's going to be really exciting. We've got a lot on our plate and this is a good group. We work well together. We've been working well together for quite some time and I'm really excited about all the possibilities and the opportunities that we have. And I guess I would be remiss if I didn't mention once again publicly that we want to thank all the hard work of Councilmember Ben Yingling and Mayor Joe Dominic. They, they worked hard. They, they did a lot of really good work for the city of Westminster and, and we just simply cannot thank them enough. I think the only other thing that I want to, want to mention is I did stop by the, the water main break the other day and there were quite a number of citizens that stopped by as they walked around in the neighborhood and thanked, and thanked the Public Works crew for all the hard work that they did. It was a very, very difficult and, and it was a very difficult water main break. It was very deep in the ground, but as they were finishing up, they were even cleaning up one of the adjoining neighbors fences that had gotten some mud splattered on it. And a lot of folks really came by and thanked the city for how well we do those things and that crew especially for the work that they were doing. I think that'll do it, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert.
Well, I have a couple of things tonight. Again, as my fellow colleagues remarked, I want to welcome Mayor Dr. Becker and Councilman Huff to their, I guess, kind of first official council meeting, at least working council meeting. I'm already seeing some exciting changes and feel some positive energy emerging for our future projects. So I'm excited about that. Since our last organizational meeting, the city of Westminster kind of has been quite busy this week, or at least I feel like I have. I, along with Councilman Kavachi and Councilman Dayhoff and Councilman Pecoraro, took part in the delivery of lunches for the first responders around the county. So I want to say I was honored to be part of that event as our first responders see our citizens. As we all know, at their absolute worst during anything from car accidents to fires to CPS and APS interventions, overdoses, et cetera. And most of the time, they have no idea what transpires after that interaction. So to say thank you to these group of folks by delivering lunch was the least I think we could have done because these folks save lives and for a lot of people that is absolutely priceless. The third thing, on Thursday, I also participated with the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce luncheon at Best Western. And it was so exciting to see everybody's faces, not on Zoom, but their faces. And enjoyed listening to the new things that we'll be seeing from McDaniel College coming around. Also wanted to congratulate Julie Jaskin as being the next president of McDaniel College and wish her the best. Later that day was a ribbon cutting for the mapping of the autonomous corridor. Thursday was really busy around here. And I just kind of want to comment as I was kind of standing in the audience watching everybody and I kind of realized Mayor Becker, President Jaskin, Kelly Schultz, the Secretary of the Maryland Department of Commerce and Libby Trossel from Carroll Community College, they were all women. Graham Dodge was also there, but.
Doesn't count, right?
But behind them was a big old banner that said, "Where History Meets Tomorrow." And four of the five standing up there were women. I thought it was just, just a great point in history for us. So I just wanted to highlight that and thank all of our, our previous and new women leaders, but also congratulate Graham on all his work on this project and the work in the future that Westminster will, will greatly benefit from. So I'm looking forward to that. And lastly, like I said, I was going to be lengthy tonight. Lastly, I was happy to join the wastewater crew last week with a personal tour. Councilman Dayhoff, I do like wastewater also. I have not shared the pictures yet on Facebook as I've been kind of busy, but was excited to see the new progress on the expansion of the wastewater plant, how well that has progressed and the progress of the pilot for our water reuse and the technology that will be implemented with that project. That is all I have.
I thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And finally, Mr. Hoff.
Mr. President, thank you. As Mayor Becker and Councilman Kavachi said, I am greatly appreciative of the, all the support that we all three received. The voter turnout was tremendous and I really am honored to be here with you all. And I appreciate the very warm welcome I've received from you all as well as from staff and I look forward to a very good four years of getting a lot done for the city of Westminster. So again, I very much appreciate the support that we've received from the voters as well as just internally from, from you all as well as staff. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoff. And, you know, I really take the opportunity during council comments to say anything. I just wanted to do that for a minute today. Yeah, I was gonna, I was thinking about something that Ms. Gilbert said and I was actually looking at that myself as I drove by Main Street, the banner said, "Where History Meets Tomorrow." And it's been on my mind for a couple of days as we, you know, unveiled something so futuristic as the autonomous vehicle corridor project made possible by our fiber network here in the city, which is very exciting. And had we not built that, this would not be happening here in Westminster. And I think about, you know, the federal funds are going to be coming our way in different varieties. Yeah, we'll get some under the American Rescue Plan. You know, I expect we'll get some opportunities presented to us under the new infrastructure program that's still being discussed. And I think this is going to give the city a lot of opportunities, you know, to do some things that need to get done and to secure the city's future for a long time to come. And as I think about all those things, you know, I'm really kind of reinvigorated, you know, about my service here on the council, looking forward to working with such a terrific group of colleagues because I think the possibilities right now are boundless. You know, I can't say how excited I am about the downtown redevelopment that we've been looking forward to with the eventual redevelopment of the Stockdale property. We've all been looking forward to, some of us for decades. And, you know, now the city has controlled it properly as we emerge from the pandemic and as, you know, investment funds, you start, investors start seeking opportunities again. I think that's going to be a great opportunity for us and really, you know, using that as, as an anchor along with the new city administration building to really help, you know, spur development all along Main Street. I think that's a terrific opportunity. As we do that, I really think we've got to, got to think hard about historic Westminster. And it's something we don't talk about a lot. We used to talk about it a lot more and I think Mr. Dayhoff will remember this. Yeah, we used to talk about historic Westminster a lot and we've kind of lost our focus on that. And we've lost, I think, our dedication to preserving some of those historic architectural features downtown. And I posted, Mr. Dayhoff made the other day on social media, reminded me of that as well. And I think that's something we need to really think about a little bit more over the coming years. You know, there's, we always used to say there's a look and a feel that Westminster has that made people want to come here. And I think we need to work hard at preserving what's left of that and getting more of it back. And as we do some of these new developments, let's make sure that they reflect, you know, that kind of look and feel that we want to see in Westminster.
Building or sitting in.
Exactly, just as, just as we think about the building that we're sitting in here right now. So just a thoughts, you know, I, you know, I've had, you know, the opportunity to extend fiber out to the county. You know, talking with the county last week at the Maryland Municipal League, your chapter dinner, you're talking with the commissioners. They look forward to doing something like that with us. I just think there are a lot of opportunities ahead and, you know, I'm very excited about pursuing some of those things. Moving along, we have no bids this evening. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, did you want to add something?
I, if I could, this is, this is what happens when you're at your first council meeting as, as mayor and don't have things written down well, which, which won't happen again. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Gilbert's comments about Thursday and the autonomous corridor. And I was remiss, I meant to mention something that during my mayor's comments. That was a fantastic event and kudos to Graham and Magic and the partnership between the city and Magic for hosting what was a pretty phenomenal event that afternoon with the attendance. First of all, I think it was very close, about ninety degrees. It was incredibly hot, but I thought the turnout was, was really, was really great on, on that day in the middle of a workday. I know when we were giving our opening remarks, it looked like we had quite a crowd that was standing there. And so it was really great to see community groups involved. I know some of the robotics groups from Carroll, Carroll Public Schools were there. The colleges were represented, some of the other nonprofits as well that in Westminster. I know Hey Westminster was there as well as a few other ones. And it was just really great to see that community engagement. And plus, I got to ride an autonomous vehicle, which was really cool. We rode right by your house.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, we rode right by Councilman Kavachi's house and we got to the four-way stop sign. And you were, both, both councilmembers, Gilbert and Hoff were in the car, were in the van. And it was pretty impressive how the vehicle stopped and let the other ones go. We did have a cat run out in front of us at one point in time. It was, it was far enough away that, but there was, you could hear there's a little collective gasp but it was, it was really, it was really impressive to, to, to ride in a vehicle that was autonomous for a bit of its, of its track. And you could sort of see the possibilities, what, what that could bring. And I know at home, we were very excited because we did get one of those little future stop for the autonomous shuttle stickers for our door because hopefully it will be more widely used than just up and down Main Street at some point down in the future. But thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I meant to say that earlier. Next time we'll have notes written down.
We'll let you go this time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, just add one little caveat onto that because you, you bring up, Madam Mayor brings up an important point. You know, I've heard discussions about fiber over the years and some people being concerned about the investment Westminster made and it, and as being the incoming Chair of Economic Development and seeing the potential of what we can do. I think sometimes people fail to understand how important fiber is to our city and the future of our city when it comes from an economic development standpoint. So I just kind of want to be on the record with that and something I think we need to all keep in mind. The fiber project, you know, has sometimes has gotten a little negative presser from certain people. I think it's instrumental to the future of the city and I think twenty years from now, people will look back on what was done here related to fiber and be very thankful for the decisions that were made by prior administrations. So I kind of just want to throw that out there because the autonomous corridor, that could not even exist without the fiber being there. So I'll, I'll end it at that, but it's, I think it's an important point that sometimes is not appreciated by some people. So anyway, I'll leave that drop.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Hoff. We have no ordinances, resolutions, I'm sorry, we have no bids this evening. I go back to that, we have no bids before, before us this evening. There are no ordinances or resolutions before us tonight. We have no unfinished business of which I'm aware. Is there any unfinished business? If none, we'll move on. We have three items of new business. The first is introduction of annexation agreement for future annexation of real property located at fourteen College View Boulevard, tax map thirty-nine, grid thirteen, parcel two forty-nine, tax ID zero seven dash zero zero one one six nine, eight Sullivan Road, tax map thirty-nine, grid thirteen, parcel seven sixty-two, tax ID zero seven zero four nine two four two, and ten Sullivan Road, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven, tax map thirty-nine, grid thirteen, parcel two forty-nine, tax ID zero seven dash zero zero one one six nine, consisting of one point five two four acres plus or minus. And we will turn to Mr. Depot, our Director of Planning, for, for an update on this. Mr. Depot.
Good evening and thank you. So the owner of three parcels, as stated by President Pecoraro, intends to annex these parcels collectively to the property to develop a convenient store of gas pumps. The owner needs additional city water and sewer to develop the property requiring the annexation. The property is located in northwest quadrant of the intersection of Sullivan Road and Maryland Route one forty and this property is contiguous with and adjoining the existing boundaries of the city and the annexation of the property would not create an enclave. The property is currently zoned C two commercial medium intensity district in Carroll County where a convenience store with gasoline pumps is a permitted use. However, this use is a special exception use in the comparable city of Westminster B Business Zone. City staff through consultation with an agreement by the owner has drafted the attached annexation agreement that outlines certain obligations of both the city and the owner prior to, prior to the annexation of the property. And this is found in the attachment three of the staff report. In general, the annexation agreement allows the owner to obtain approval by the county as a gasoline, as a convenience store with gas pumps at the property subject to meeting city zoning ordinance, landscape manual and development design manual requirements as outlined in the agreement. Following the approval of the convenience store with gas pumps by Carroll County, subject to the annexation agreement, approval of necessary permits, footers poured and construction has begun, the city then may annex the property. Tonight, the city staff has recommended that the mayor and common council introduce the proposed annexation agreement as provided in attachment three of this report. That completes my, my report and I'm available for any questions. And the property owner is available for questions as well.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Depot. So let's get this forth properly, Madam, a motion for introduction of the annexation.
I'll move to introduce, Mr. President.
Thank you, there's a second motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second by Mr. Dayhoff. So now we'll move on to any questions for Mr. Depot or for the other members. So now we'll move on to any questions for Mr. Depot or for the applicant or any discussion. Anybody like to be heard?
So, Mr. President.
Mr. Kabachi.
I want to make sure I'm clear. At this point, they they they're they're going to get permission from the county first, you said. Prior to us potentially annexing them in, the county is going to grant them permission to do what they want to do?
That's correct. I think that's what's different. Typically, you would see just the annexation agreement to annex a property. In this case, we have this agreement to do just that. Because the use is a special exception use in the city, there is some hesitation in the property owner to annex in and then be held to that review and approval by a special exception with the Board of Zoning Appeals. In this case, the city, along with discussions with the property owner, would allow them to do the by right development in the county, subject to meeting certain standards of the city. So that way, when we do annex it, we limit the amount of nonconforming issues that may occur. So they would have to meet cer- certain city setback standards, design manual standards, landscaping signage standards that would be approved as part of the county approval. Then, once they get their approval and begin construction, we would then annex. So we would come back before the Mayor and Common Council with the actual annexation agreement at that point.
But we don't have, they won't have to go through the process of applying for the special exception, having the hearings and all that, because it will have already been in that use when we annex it. Is that right?
Absolutely. Essentially, by this agreement, we are accepting the fact that that use would be allowed even as a special exception in the city. So that is correct.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kabachi. And just so we understand, this is where the current Exxon station is located and the parcels on either side of that. Is that correct, Mr. Depot?
Yes, it's those three parcels right at that intersection would be consolidated into one parcel for the Sheets, for a Sheets convenience store.
Okay. And will the access be off of Sullivan Road into the property?
I believe so. We we don't have that information yet. I think that would go through the process with the site plan that we would look at and work with the state. Um, I understand is they may look for a right out only one to one, but again, that would be that the state would have to approve that.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Depot or any discussion? Any question? See, Mr. Yes, Mr. Hoff.
I'll I'll just make a comment. It's a tying into what Councilman Kabachi was asking about. Having been on planning and zoning for a long time for Carroll County, this is a little bit of a unique situation. And um, but I understand why it's being done the way it's being done and it makes sense. They the property owner just wants to assure before they come into the city that they theoretically wouldn't come in and then be denied the special exception. So by doing it in this unusual manner, they are guaranteeing the fact that they will not be denied the special exception. So it it makes sense to me, the fact that we have quite frankly, I think this is sort of a a smart innovative solution to a particular very unique set of circumstances. Um, and it makes a lot of sense to me. So.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. And I guess this is the first of many times your experience on the county planning commission be valuable to us.
Yep.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. President, Mr. Dayhoff. Yeah, I I wanted to emphasize that um, this is yet another example of a unique thinking out of the box pro-business approach on the part of the the city of Westminster. And I'm really happy to see this project move forward. I guess I was curious and it might be a little premature to ask, are we looking forward to, Mr. Depot, are we looking forward to any infrastructure improvements as far as that intersection are concerned? Any any insight into that? Of course, that's with State Highway.
That that would be through State Highway. I would think the amount of trips with the gasoline stations, some of the retail that's already there, the trips would be somewhat similar. So we may not see that. But again, that would be as part of this traffic study and so forth would be done at site plan. I I do want to point out, I want to thank Mr. McGuire and Ms. Levane. They were very instrumental to this agreement. And this way, in this thought process and getting this done.
All right, thank you. I know nobody had any questions, but Mr. McGuire, anything you need to add to this?
No, I just appreciate all of your comments. They've been very supportive. And also working with Mr. Depot and Ms. Levane has 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 been slow, but but with constant progress on a, you know, unique situation. I I do have one question, and maybe this is unfair, but you know, this is not really a legislation. It's it's a essentially a contract, I think. I I'm not sure what introduction means in this context. Obviously, we're trying to get it approved, authorized to be signed so that we can move forward into the into the site plan review process. Is any sense for what happens next?
Well, I was about to get to that. We all learned together. So, Mr. Depot and Ms. Levane, um, so it's set for introduction. Are we voting tonight or are we, is something else happening here before we can do that?
There's no reason you can't vote on it this evening.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, does anybody, I mean, I don't think there's any objections to this. We, I think we're all familiar with the project over a course of many months.
Yes.
So unless anybody is in objections, there's no reason not to vote on.
Mr. President, if I may, when you say vote on it, you mean for both introduction and adoption?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. So maybe we need to amend the motion then because it specifically says introduction.
That's right. We'll go back and do that.
So I made the motion. So I'll go ahead and edit my motion to say both introduction and adaptation.
All right. And without and without objection, we will allow Mr. Kabachi to do that?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none. Move on to a vote. All those in favor of approval of annexation, this annexation agreement, please say aye. Oppose say nay. The eyes seem to have it and the eyes have it. And the agreement is approved. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will return now to the next item, which is approval of Recreation of Parks Advisory Board recommendation on lining additional pickleball courts at City Park. After that, we will turn to Ms. Gruber.
Yes, good evening. Uh, I bring before you tonight on behalf of Chairperson Jessica Laird of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, a recommendation um in response to yet another request to line additional pickleball courts at City Park. So you may remember um, back in twenty eighteen, in response to a community request, the Mayor and Common Council agreed to allow one set of tennis courts at City Park to be lined with yellow paint, creating two two pickleball courts. And on Monday, March twenty-second of this year, you again endorsed a recommendation from the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board to line additional courts at City Park. The additional courts that were requested at that time were lined in April and it provided three additional pickleball courts. Since the lining of those courts in April, the demand for outdoor pickleball courts continues to outpace the number of available facilities. Recently, the Carroll County Pickleball Association submitted another request to the Recreation and Park Advisory Board to line additional courts at City Park. The request to line six additional pickleball courts was presented on May eighteenth at the monthly meeting of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. And in your packet, you were provided with a rough sketch. It's a Google map of the tennis courts at City Park. And um, represented in the green lines are the courts that are already lined at City Park and the white lines on that particular sketch represent the request that was brought forth by the Carroll County Pickleball Association. So the the white lines requested, as I said, six additional courts. And after a discussion at um, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board meeting, it was brought forth that um they would endorse lining four out of the six courts requested. And they would like to um, keep all of the additional lining of pickleball courts on the set of tennis courts that is closest to uh, Winter Street and leave Long Alley alone. So if you look at the sketch that was provided in your packet, there is a request to line additional courts on the set of tennis courts closest to Long Alley. However, um, that sketch has a red circle around the actual um, courts that the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board um is bringing forth to you tonight to authorize for lining. So with that, uh, the recommendation is that the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board endorses the lining of four additional pickleball courts on the Winter Street side of City Park. And um, certainly would like your feedback and input on their recommendation. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Ms. Gruber. So we have a, we have a recommendation from our Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. And um, let me just say parenthetically that it's a real pleasure to have such a board that can make recommendations to us again. We have a motion for approval. Motion to approve. The motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Well, Mr. President, if I might interrupt, we need to clarify what we're approving, because remember, there was a request for more lining than what they're recommending.
So I was, I so I was asking for a motion to approve the recommendation.
The recommendation only.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll second.
That's right. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Mr. Kabachi to approve the recommendation of the Recreation of Parks Advisory Board, which was for four picklebar, four pickleball courts, additional courts. Is there any discussion or any questions for Ms. Gruber? Mr. Hoff?
Mr. President, um, this is not my area of expertise at all, and I'm just curious. If you line them for pickleball, can they still be used for tennis as well?
Mr. President, so I am not the chair of this committee. I I planned on speaking on this, so it's going to be germane to your question, what I planned on saying. So if I may, um, they they can be. However, it's not ideal for either, in particular for tennis players. Tennis players typically don't love it. Um, I think the pickleball players are a little more accepting of it, probably because they also came a lot later than the tennis players. But you can do both. But again, it's not ideal. And to that point, while I I seconded and will vote for this, I do want to, I guess, maybe point out, Ms. Gruber, to you and 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 the um, uh, Recreation and Parks Committee. I would like to see us ultimately move away from pickleball on the long long well, on the long avenue side of the courts, especially now that we're adding additional courts over to Winters. I'm not saying right away, because I realize they they're heavily used. But I have got, I've I've heard a little pushback from some tennis folks that it's tough to get on and they don't like the lines as much. And they tend to use the 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 courts closer to, um, it's Long Avenue, right? You know, except for the Long Valley, I'm sorry. And I know we have other tennis courts in other places in the city that maybe aren't as heavily used. And I'm hopeful that at some point in time, we can maybe look to maybe convert some of those into pickleball courts. In particular, some of them that might not be quite clo- so close to homes. Because pickleball is pretty noisy relative to tennis. Tennis is a pretty quiet sport. But the pickleball ball is very hard and they're using wo- wooden paddles. And I can tell you, it's a pretty constant banging that when you have four and five groups playing all at one time, the neighbors that live around there, including myself, although I'm far enough away, it is not bothersome to me. Or I can hear it, but it doesn't bother me. But I can tell you, if I lived closer, it it's constant and it's and it's pretty pretty uh, consistent noise that, of course, anyone living next to a park expects to an extent, but not ongoing, constant hours after hours, sometimes up until nine, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. So I I think that we ought to consider eventually moving pickleball off of those courts and moving them to somewhere else in the city, maybe like uh, JCParks, which from my understanding, tennis is not played up there very much. Those tennis courts sits sit far away from a lot of other um, residences, much further than what the the Long Avenue tennis courts do. That might be something we should look towards. So while I'm going to vote for it, I'd like us to do it, keeping in mind that ultimately, I think that should be the direction that we head in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Any other comments or questions on this?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
I am the council liaison to the advisory board. And um, the points that Mr. Kabachi just raised were were discussed at great length during the meeting. Um, and as a matter of fact, it was exactly those talking points which prevailed in not only having the 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 pickleball lines on the one side and not on the Longwell Avenue side. We also discussed, and I don't want to jump ahead too far, but we also discussed um, lining JCPark. We have a study that we're we're looking forward to having a study of JCPark uh, about its utilization. The tennis courts aren't utilized well at this point in time. We considered lining the uh, the tennis courts at JCPark with pickleball. But they are, they need to be upgraded before we can do that. So but we did actively discuss those exact same points. So I think that I think this is a step forward um in 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 light of the the fact that so many folks enjoy pickleball. But but everything that you, all the points that you raised were discussed at great length and we're we are well aware of that. This was a, this was a compromise and I think it was a compromise. I think it was really negotiating and getting to yes, and everybody was wholeheartedly supportive. But we need to take a good look at this in the future. We really do. I guess in full disclosure, I also have a home that's not too far from from these courts. Also, I don't hear them as much though from where I am. But I've also heard from some of the neighbors that um that uh, it's it's a little bit, it's a little bit more of a louder sport than tennis. So we'll have to see, we'll have to let it play out and see how it develops. We're flexible. Did I cover that well enough, Director Gruber?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, ready for the vote? All those in favor of approving the Advisory Board recommendation, which was for four, lining four additional pickleball courts at City Park, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. The eyes seem to have it and the eyes have it. And the recommendation is approved. Ms. Gruber, please thank the Parks Board for us and uh, tell them, you know, great job. This is exactly why we wanted to have them back. So very pleased to have that happening.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
If I might add, it's a great board. It's a great advisory board. I really like working with them. It's a lot of forward thinking, uh, folks that uh, the discussions are exciting and I think the city should be really happy. I guess I should also mention that um, Mr. Kabachi had a lot to do with this advisory board a number of years ago and laid the groundwork for it. And I I have, we only have him to thank for setting that precedent and setting setting those uh, setting setting that example in the past. But it's it's a great group of folks and I think we're going to be looking forward to a lot of exciting things coming out of that advisory board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, the next item under new business is for approval of the rules of order procedure for the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster. I distributed to you at the last meeting, just I I must point out at the conclusion of the last meeting, I I forgot to do it before we adjourned the meeting. And so so technically, you know, we should not be voting to approve these tonight unless the council, you know, you know, doesn't object to that. So we'll see what the discussion is like and we can, you know, if if people want to have some discussion, we can certainly put it off until the next meeting. But um, you know, if everybody wants to be comfortable, we can go ahead and do it tonight. But um, you know, uh, the city attorney and I, over the last couple of months, have been taking a look at the um, rules of order. It's been some years since they were, um, since a fresh copy was distributed to everybody that included, you know, various updates, like, you know, the changes in committees and and some other little things like that. So we thought, first of all, that we ought to have a clean copy that everybody, you know, could have and and make reference to. And that we could post on the city website and all that sort of thing. The second thing is that some things have happened in the last couple of years that we ought to, that ought to be reflected in our rules, like virtual meetings and how we want to handle, you know, people meeting virtually, perhaps voting virtually, things like that. So we wanted to include some things like that. We also looking through it, wanted to make sure that we used the same terms consistently for the same things throughout the document. And so, uh, you know, you'll you'll see um, in various places, references, you know, to um, you know, prior to doing this, in in some places, we referred to, you know, the the councils, uh, you know, um, presiding officer as the council president, another person just as the president, in other places, the chair, in other places, the the providing officer. So we decided to standardize on two things, either council president, when we're talking about the individual, or presiding officer, when we're talking about whoever might be occupying the role in in leading a meeting at any particular time. Uh, we also decided to make a distinction between the legislative body, which includes the mayor as well as the members of the common council and just the council itself, which sometimes takes actions on its own. And, you know, the mayor, of course, doesn't have a vote there, so there was no need to refer to the mayor. So things like that is what we So things like that is what we did, uh, just tried to lay it out in a little, uh, in a way that made sense and was clear to everybody. Obviously, the most important thing about rules is always, um, yeah, somebody who's, you know, done a lot of this. A couple of things is first of all, that they're clear and everybody can understand them. We hope we've done that. The second part is that, uh, the whole point of having rules of procedure is so that you protect the will of the, the ability of the majority to get things done while protecting the rights of the minority. And I think our rules do that very well. Um, so with that being said, um, I'm happy to do this whichever way you all would like to. If you'd like to just kind of roll through it and take things up in any order, the particular, the people might have questions, looking at the particular revisions that we've made. You know, that might be the easiest way to do it, so we don't jump back and forth. Um, so.
Mr. President.
With that, yes, Mr. Dayhoff?
Would you like a motion, uh, to suspend the rules of order and, uh, adopt, to talk, to talk about the rules, uh, and go ahead and adopt it this evening?
I would appreciate that very much.
I'd like to make that motion that we suspend the rules of order, uh, for the purposes of, um, introducing and adopting the, uh, council rules of order this evening.
All right, thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Dayoff to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Ms. Gruber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, I seem to have, and the ayes have it. And so the rules are suspended. It'll interfere with the introduction and adoption of these rules this evening.
Now, do I need to make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, adopt it?
I, I, I have one or two things.
We do need a motion. Yes, we need a motion to, to, you know, to do that, and then we can go through and make any change.
That first and then talk about it.
That's right.
Let's get that. Yes, let's, I'll, I'll make that motion that we go ahead and adopt, uh, the, uh, amended, uh, council rules of order, uh, this evening, if that's okay with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayoff. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second motion by Mr. Dayoff and a second by Mr. Kavachi, uh, to, uh, you know, adopt these rules. And now, uh, we'll be happy to, you know, move through and discuss and address any concerns people might have.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi?
So first of all, I'd like to take a moment and say thank you for the hard work you put into this, and Ms. Levin as well. You know, you, you do a lot of things good as the council president, but this is really in your bailiwick. I mean, this is right up your alley to do something like this, and I think you did it really well.
Thank you.
Um, you know, just even, even the fact that you thought about it and, and moved it forward, you know, it, it, I, I probably wouldn't have even considered it, you know, the way I function. So thank God that, uh, that you had thought about it and brought this to our attention, because otherwise we'd be a pack of wild animals if, uh, if I was.
Well, I'll be whenever it gets that bad.
But, uh, but I am appreciative and, and thank you because it's important, and to your point, you know, we need to have them. Um, so I really appreciate the effort you put into it, and by and large, I, I think everything is wonderful. There was only one item. I, I had a couple, but I know I spoke to a few, few of you guys and, and it assuaged any concerns I had um, regarding them, except there is one item I would like to change, or I'd like to propose a change to. Under section 22, Special Legislative Committees, we moved away from the mayor, um, uh, making the recommendation, I guess, to appoint a committee, which I understand why, because it is a legislative thing and where the, the, the council is the legislative body that makes the decisions. So we want to, you want to change that, or, or the suggestion is to change that to the president. But I think I would like to have that read mayor or president. And the reason I'd like to do that, Mr. President, is because while I have no doubt you as president today, um, there'd never be a problem, and if you were approached, you would, you would do it. But, you know, I, 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 I think it would be nice to have the mayor to also have that ability, in particular, if for some reason, there was some reason that the president may not want to, um, we could plead our case potentially to the mayor, um, to have that done instead, um, and maybe move it forward. So I like the idea of having the mayor or the president be able to make that recommendation. Of course, it still has to be voted on and approved by, or by the, the council as a whole, but I, I, I think that's, that's a change, maybe to, to me at least makes sense, and it's the only one I have on this document.
I, I think it's a great idea. Yeah, certainly, uh, you know, have a lot of confidence in the mayor's ability to, uh, to be part of that process as well. Mr. Dayoff?
Mr. President, I'm smiling because you changed that after I got elected mayor. Because before, it was the mayor.
We changed that when it was, um, a previous mayor who was elevated to a different, uh, level of government.
Okay, okay. Well, I know we made a number of changes right after I got elected, and I supported all of those changes. I, I, I'll go along, for the sake of comity, I will go along with, with my colleagues. I'm, I'm not as comfortable changing it. I, we're the legislative body, and, uh, I pretty much like it the way it's written. I'll look forward to hearing from my colleagues. But, um, I'm, I'm not. I like, I like the way we do it. I, but I understood, I understand your, I understood your thinking.
So you say the way, Mr. President, may I ask a question?
You may, Mr. President.
When you say the way we do it, it was mayor.
It was mayor, it was mayor, it was mayor before I, the way I remember it, it was mayor before, before I got elected mayor, and it was changed right after that. When I, when, when I served as a council member in the late nineties, uh, the mayor appointed the legislative committees, and there was some discomfort about that because the, the, the mayor is not a part of the legislative body. And I, and I like the thinking and it's worked. I, I think it's.
So it was never changed then in the rules, is what you're saying?
Well, I said, we're talking, excuse me, if I may, I'm talking about two separate things here.
Okay.
All right. So you'll all recall that at the organizational meeting the other, the other evening, when we appointed the standing committees, yes, the language used to read, and that's a little farther up here.
Okay.
That was for, that was for regular standing committees.
Gotcha.
The old rule was, as Mr. Dayoff correctly said, once upon a time, that the mayor would make all the appointments to all the standing committees and to the, um, you know, to the, um, you know, various administrative, you know, executive roles, like, you know, liaisons to boards and presidents.
Right.
And then the council did decide that they wanted, that, that they wanted that decision to be made by the person that was responsible to them. In other words, the council elects its president, and so the president really has to do what the council wants. You know, in terms of proposing, you know, a slate of, uh, committee chairs and, and committee members. And so that was why that change was made there.
Yeah.
This change we're talking about here was a suggestion that I made to reflect the change made some years ago i- in the way the standing committees was done, because this still refer, referenced the mayor appointing special committees, and my thought was that for consistency's sake, if the president of the council was appointing standing committees, the president of the council should appoint special committees. And Mr. Kavachi has made the argument that, that perhaps in, for the purpose of special committees, because they are special and they might deal with some issue of the moment, in which perhaps the mayor might take a particular interest, for example, that, um, that, uh, that maybe it made sense to allow, you know, the appointment of a special committee by either the mayor or the council president. I'm comfortable with that approach, if that's, if that's what the, um, council would like to do. I certainly think there's, I certainly think there's an argument to be made, you know, to do that. It remains up to confirmation of a majority of voting members of the body. So if, uh, if a mayor or council president were to propose the appointment of a special committee that the council didn't think so much of, they could certainly reject the idea, no matter who made the proposal, and I think that's perfectly fine. So, Mr. Hoff?
So just to clarify, not to get too far in the weeds here, but if we make it that it's either the appointment of the mayor or the president, you know, in theory, you could have the mayor make a slate, and you could have the president make a slate. You know, the way standing committees are, are done are by the president in consultation with the mayor.
Right.
I'm just, you know, and I, I think we're not going to have any issue with the current makeup, but I'm a little bit concerned. I, I guess in theory, anything has to be approved by the council, so, but in essence, when, if you say either or, then in theory, you know, the mayor could bring a slate, and the council president could bring a slate.
And the, and the council.
Or do you rather say that it's by mutual agreement of the president and mayor? That way, the mayor and president have to be on the same page before they bring it to, uh, I'm just throwing ideas out there, that, that they have to be in agreement before they bring it to council. Uh, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about the language of either, you know, either or, and maybe I'm not thinking it all the way through, but either mutual consent or how standing committees are done. I, I don't know. I'm just.
So what's, the mayor's seeking recognition. Let's, let's go to the mayor.
Uh, I'm gonna yield the floor to Councilmember Kavachi, because I wanted to hear what he said to.
Okay.
So, uh, obviously, I'm, I'm the one who started this mess. Um, so I, I, I hear what you're saying, but, but I'm actually, actually contemplating exactly the opposite of kind of where you're going with it, because I'm contemplating a scenario where potentially the president isn't willing to do it, but the mayor may want to, or potentially vice versa. The mayor may want to, but the council president doesn't, so either one of them could. Again, this is only special committees. This isn't, this isn't, you know, the standing committees, and I don't ant, I would not anticipate this being a, a slate of committees. I think this is for a single, well, I mean, it certainly could be more than one, but I, I, I think our, the, the thought is, these are, the, these are unique in terms of why they're being created in the first place, and I I'm trying to envision a circumstance where you might have the mayor that wants to do something, but the council president is in an agreement, so then we get to make that decision. So in your case, it would be, the council president may say, hey, I'd like to recommend a special committee to do this, and here's, here's what I want the committee to do and who to be on it or whatever, and the, the mayor may do something different, and then we've got to make the decision on which one of them is right, and which one of them we agree with or don't agree with.
Yeah. And just, just, you know, as a point of information, um, the last time I can recall a special committee being appointed was maybe, I want to say five or six years ago, when we appointed a special committee on water reuse, which, uh, you know, served for a little while, and then made a report, and then its duties were absorbed by the, um, finance committee. Wakefield Valley was another one. Wakefield Valley was another one. Yes, I think that, that was, that was prior.
A little older.
Yeah, prior to that. So, doesn't happen very often. It happens occasionally. So the, so, um, so there is, so Mr. Kavachi has expressed his opinion. Um, he has not yet made a motion, because you can't preface a motion with debate. So if somebody wanted to make an emotion on an amendment to the rules, now would certainly be an appropriate time to do so, if they had an emotion. What?
Did I make, oh, he means a motion to amend.
A motion to amend. So we, so somebody. I'll support it. I, I thought if somebody wanted to make a motion to amend, now would be the time.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend, um, section 22 to reflect that the special legislative committees for particular purposes may be appointed by the president or the mayor. Is that okay with everyone?
Aye.
Or, or, or the mayor, subject to confirmation by the majority of the voting members of the common council.
I'll second.
All right. Good. Motion by Mr. Dayhoff to amend section 22 to, um, you know, re, that they may be appointed by the mayor or president.
Are we just, the second by, this will just be on.
This is just on, we're not voting this yet. Um, we just have a motion. And the second by Mr. Kavachi.
Yes, sir.
All right. So any further discussion on the amendment? Madam Mayor, you never did get to express an opinion.
I was, I, I was letting them to, to finish, but no, I'm, I'm in full support of that, and, and, and I appreciate that. So no, that's, that's fine. I had that marked as well.
All right, very good. All right. Terrific. All right. So if there's no further discussion, we want to vote. All those in favor of amending, uh, section 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have, and the ayes have it, and the amendment is adopted. We now return to discussion on the main question, which is the entire package of rules of order procedure. Mr. Hoff?
President, I just wanted to clarify something. There were places in the document where, see, you did a red line, where before president, you put council president. But then there were other places where it just said president, but there was not, was the intent? I mean, it doesn't matter, because materially, president means council president, but there are places within the document where it just says council president, and places where it says president and not to be.
That's a, that's a very good point. So I actually.
Clear about it, but.
We had gone through this, and we tried to catch every place where it was like that. And apparently, Mr. Kavac, by Mr. Kavachi's count, I believe we missed three places.
Yeah.
And so, um, I don't recall exactly where those three places were, but without objection, every place where it just says president, you know, we will add the word council, if, if nobody objects to that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
That's a non-substantive change, so I, I would be perfectly comfortable with that.
All right, thank you very much.
As one of the other OCD parliamentary geeks in council, I really appreciate the work that you did on this and Ms. Levin. But I didn't, I, I counted, I, I think I counted three. Yeah, I counted three.
Well, hopefully no more, hopefully no more are lurking. We had searched carefully.
And they're non, they're, they're non-substantive changes, so you can go ahead and make those changes.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you both gentlemen for that, uh, that point. Um, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Madam Mayor?
The, the only thing I, I would like to say as I, as I read through this, is that I do appreciate the change from he to he and she, or from him to him and her. So I do appreciate that, that being taken into account as well.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor. We're, as I said, we're trying to update.
Thank you.
Where history meets tomorrow.
I wouldn't go so far as to say we're won.
Now, that's awesome.
But we are. We are trying to be respectful.
Order, order.
So, is there any further, any further discussion? All right. Hearing none? Are you ready for the question?
Not yet.
Not yet? All right. Well, Mr. Kavachi is collecting.
That was funny.
Let me, let me, let me once again say thank you for, you know, supporting this update of the, of the rules. I think, you know, good, and I, as I said, um, the city clerk, um, hopefully can then work to get these posted on the website, so that our citizens will understand the rules under which, you know, their legislative body operates and be prepared to, uh, understand how we conduct our business. Mr. Hoff?
Mr. President, one other point I want, and maybe we don't have to clarify, but under public comment, do we have rules as far as how long public comment are, because it's not addressed within the document itself, and for instance, a lot of times when we would do hearings, we would have a three-minute rule. Is that, that doesn't need to be documented with, in this, or can we make that up, make our minds up, depending on the particular situation?
So we have never made a rule on a time limit. We have always asked people to be brief. Uh, people have generally complied. I can tell you that I will not tolerate a filibuster attempt. But that's never been a problem, you know, and people have always been, you've always welcomed, you know, citizens to join us and, and share their thoughts. We do have rules about what people can, can say.
I saw that. I appreciate that.
And, uh, you know, we, you know, we require members of the public to abide by the same courtesies uh, that we try to apply ourselves in our conversation here. So, um.
Mr. President?
We do do that. Yes, Mr. Dayhoff?
Where was that, in 17D?
Uh, it's towards the end.
Okay. But I thought I did read that we incorporated the removal of disruptive persons.
So, yeah, and, 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 you know, we, and as, as every set of rules, you know, does, and certainly as Robert's Rules of Order does, you know, the president or presiding officer, whoever is in the chair, has wide latitude to.
Yes, very much so.
Um, you know, the, uh, you know, you'll see the, you'll see reflected in here that the chief of police, who usually attends, um, or somebody that he may, you know, designate to be joining us, um, you know, they have to surge their arms if necessary, you know, to take actions that have never been necessary so far, as long as I've been on the council, but if, if it were to occur, we'd be prepared.
So, Mr. President, the important thing is that you have the ability to make a call in, or, or if it's, uh, Mayor Becker to make the call under the appropriate situation. Just because I have been in situations before where, in all frankness, you'll have somebody speak for 10 minutes, and then it's very disrespectful for everyone else who's waiting and trying to be respectful of everybody's time, and I think that's just something we need to keep in mind. Now, it might not normally come up, but that has happened to me before, um, in, in more contentious hearings, and it can be problematic.
And I will say, when we have public hearings, which are different, we often do set some kind of limit, particularly when we've been, you know, when it's been an issue that we thought was going to, you know, garner such public attention that we had to relocate the meeting to, yes, Fire Hall, which was our go-to place to go prior to having, you know, a larger facility available to us over at the administrative offices. Um, and when we did that, you know, you know, the, whoever, you know, we would frequently say, you know, we ask everybody to limit their comments to, you know, three minutes, five minutes, whatever, you know, whatever we seemed to think was appropriate at the time. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Yeah, I seem to have, and the ayes have it, and the rules as amended are approved. Thank you all very much. And, uh, that concludes our new business. It's now time for departmental reports. For that, to lead us through this, I will turn to our interim city administrator, Mr. David Deutsch. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, good evening, mayor and common council members. Let me, uh, start out this evening with Mr. Glass.
I have no report this evening, unless there are questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Chief Gladwell.
Good evening, everyone. So we are holding a sergeant's promotion process. We had four of our internal candidates who took the written test on Saturday. Our next step is an oral board assessment center. We're also currently running an entry level police officer hiring process. We've conducted both a written test and an interview panel, and we'll select our top scoring applicants to start a background investigation and polygraph test next. We have reserved police academy slots in the Carroll County Sheriff's Office Police Academy, which is slated for early September. We have one student officer in the Training Commission's Police Academy who is scheduled to graduate in the first week of August. We currently have one officer who's deployed with his National Guard unit overseas. We met last Thursday for our quarterly Carroll County Chiefs meeting for the first time since COVID hit. And that gave us an opportunity to discuss the many changes that have occurred in the last legislative session. On Wednesday, the Carroll County Health Department sponsored their annual first responder appreciation event. Usually, it's a dinner with speakers and a little bit of an education piece. This year, they did a virtual training session and then a delivery of boxed lunches to the first responder locations, which I know a number of you participated in, and we are very thankful. On Saturday, May the 15th, we were honored to participate in an event organized by the Boys and Girls Club Westminster, during which we were presented with this wonderful appreciation award for our support of the club. And we got to spend some quality time with the staff and the kids of the Boys and Girls Club. Crime wise, we've had a string of thefts from auto. We have identified a suspect, but I wanted to remind members of the public to please keep your vehicles locked and to secure valuables out of sight or in the house. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Gruber.
Good evening. Last week, the Recreation and Parks Department invested two evenings onboarding pool staff with one on land and one in water training session. And if you know of anyone who is looking for summer employment, we are still looking for lifeguards, and we will assist interested candidates with the required training and certification process. So if you know of anyone or if anyone out there this evening is watching this, please visit the city's website to apply. Staff has also, along with onboarding lifeguards, been busy working on preparing the pool for our inspection and ultimately opening day, which is coming up on Saturday. And I am happy to report that on Thursday of last week, we passed our health department inspection and are cleared to open as scheduled. On Thursday, May 20, thanks to the efforts of our streets department, we were able to take the safety fencing down around the new playground equipment at Home Farm Park. And our community was very excited to be able to set foot on that new equipment. We are looking to do a formal grand opening celebration sometime during the month of July, tentatively scheduled for July 13. Thanks to our ambitious Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. So please stay tuned for further details on that celebration. And lastly, we continue to work on plans as we move the beer and barbecue stroll back out onto Main Street. Anyone who had purchased tickets from us for the event that was going to be held in the parking lot, those tickets will be honored. They will be they are being transformed into a VIP experience. And anyone else wishing to attend the event will pay a general admission fee at the gates and will pay as they go for beer and barbecue on that particular day. At this point, it does look like our festival footprint will be from Longwell Avenue to John and Bond Streets. And that concludes my report, unless there are questions.
Cool.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Mr. Davidson.
Good afternoon. Just like a report, the camera project is on the beginning this Friday morning at 8:00 AM. So for the playgrounds of Lucas Lane area. So we begin this Friday 8:00 AM, scheduled for.
Great.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown.
You're muted, Eric.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Just wanted to report that the rental housing license, renewal notices, we started sending those out on this past Friday. We concluded that today. So the notices should be out. They the they will have until June 30 to make the renewal. And then they'll get a grace period up through July 31. After that point, then if they want to renew, then there we have to pay a higher price for renewing after July 31. And we'll try to send some some reminder notices before that. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Colston.
Good evening. I have nothing to report in addition to the written report, but I am available for questions.
Thank you. And Mr. Depot.
Good evening again. As was brought up in the last mayor and common council meeting on May 13, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the additional signage for the Weiss Market along Route 140, approved the site development plan for the expansion of a manufacturing use at 1300 Tech Court, approved the final subdivision plat Stonegate Section 5 for 40 single family detached lots, and forwarded a recommendation to approve ordinance 934. This is the zoning ordinance text amendment to allow new rooftop solar uses as amended by the commission. In addition, the commission held elections, and Ross Albers is again the chair, and Kevin Beaver is the new vice chair. Also, and this was brought up tonight, as a reminder, for downtown businesses, the city of Westminster was awarded $61,000 as part of the Maryland Strong Economic Recovery Initiative for Main Street. This is a mini grant. It's a one time award of $2,500 for existing Main Street businesses with no repayment due or matching component required. The city is currently accepting applications, and information about the mini grant can be found on the city website. That completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. President, that's the lineup.
All right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayoff.
If it's okay, I'll give a fire department report.
Certainly.
Let's get caught up a little bit on the fire department reports. The March 2021 report, for the month of March, we had 550 calls. 455 of those calls were for EMS, and 95 of those calls were for fire. 316 of the calls were in the city limits, and 192 calls were just outside the city limits. The one problematic statistic I always like to call to my colleagues' attention is the number of overlapping calls. 51% of the time when you call for an ambulance in the city of Westminster, all ambulances are deployed, and we need to bring in New Winter or Pleasant Valley or Reese, they do a great job for us, but it still is a cause for concern. And let's go ahead with the April 2021 report. For the month of April, we had 531 calls. 459 of those calls were for EMS. 72 of those calls were for fire. 307 of the calls were in the city limits. 197 of the calls were in the first due area. And again, the number of overlapping calls were 51%. That brings for a total of 2021, a total of 308 fire calls and 1,733 EMS calls for a total of 2,041 calls. I will remind my colleagues that we often run as many as 7,000 calls a year. And it looks like we're in that looking at those numbers again this year. Also, this Thursday, the the Westminster Fire Department will have its big money raffle. We're going to do that virtually. And the guest of honor will be Mayor Dr. Mona Becker. We will provide her with as many duties as otherwise assigned. I'm the emcee for the event, and I've been sharpening my pencil to see how I can fit you in to that that good event. And I think that'll conclude my report, Mr. Deutsch. And, Mr. President, thank you very much for this opportunity to provide you with a report.
Thank you. Mayor Doctor, that sounds very German.
I like it.
Sounds very German.
Mayor Doctor.
Mayor Doctor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. No, no pun intended on your last name.
I can't help myself. You're like on fire.
Sounds like a comedy show up here.
We didn't even rehearse.
We may we may want to call to the council's president's attention, the rules of order and procedures for the mayor.
Nothing, nothing near the.
Be here every two, every two weeks, folks.
All night.
Very good.
So thank you very much, Mr. Deutsch. And let me just say that to our department heads, we are very much looking forward to seeing you all in person again at our next meeting. So that'll be very exciting for us all. Thank you very much. And that concludes the reports. And then the final item on our agenda is citizen comments, where we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issue that pertains to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. During these virtual meetings that we've been having, we've invited the public to comment by sending their comments to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. And our city clerk has faithfully transmitted those comments to me. And when we have had them, I've read them at the conclusion of the meeting at this time. I'm informed that we have no comments for tonight. We look forward, as I said earlier, in the very near future, to allowing people to comment again in person and not have to worry about that anymore. So that's terrific. And that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, June 14. Without objection, we are adjourned. Please stay safe and healthy. Wear your mask and get a shot.